All right, we're gonna open the meeting. There it is. Six o'clock. So first up, we have meeting minutes from August ninth, which we can't approve because we don't have a, we need both of these guys. That wasn't there.
You weren't there.
So.
Sorry, I'll get it back on next time.
No worries. So I would make a motion to table the examination of meeting minutes from August ninth, twenty twenty one until next meeting. Is there a second? Any discussion? All favor? Audience participation, I believe we have two. Jerry, Jerry, Dick, you were up first. I wrote Jerry on my paper here.
All right.
Would you like to come on up? Okay.
Or would you like me?
So if you, there's a speaker there, or you can have a seat and, and either one of these, wherever you feel most comfortable.
All right.
Sounds good.
Okay, two man, straight up in the light, so. Okay. I have two handouts for the board and for Josh. Just to help understand what I'm talking about. Okay, thank you. Built my house in nineteen seventy eight on Gore Road. The time, it was a dirt road, recently been stoned and oiled and had been paved over like that several times over the years. But it was never properly crowned, so the entire drainage of the road come across from the north side onto the south side. And you'll notice on the first handout, I've located the culverts between number eighteen and number thirty houses on the north side of the road. Each arrow represents location of either a culvert or a culvert for stream, okay? Now, if you've been down Gore Road, and all in the past, you'll notice that that section of the road has no shoulder. There is no place for water to go. And right now, the culvert at the bottom of Yakum's driveway.
Yeah.
It's like, where's Waldo? It's so overgrown, you can't even see it. Okay. Now, prior to the last time the cable replaced the water line, and then following that Palmer paving came in and redid the road, they turned it all up. The guy running the grader did an excellent job of crowning that road. Prior to that, all the water that came down from number eighteen, house number eighteen, down to about Yakum's place, came across the road, onto my leach field, into my pond, and destroyed my driveway. Dick Hart and I replaced that driveway four times in the last twenty years. Okay. In the winter, I have to get out there and dig holes in the snowbank so the water can run off prior to hitting my leach field in my driveway. I still do that. Yesterday afternoon, I went out there and opened up on the side of the road, a little channel for water to get it with the stop point to my pond. So it comes basically from number eighteen all the way down the road to number thirty into that culvert, and then across the road into the pond. So so far, in the last five or six years, I've not had any water come onto the field or into my driveway because of the crown of the road. To know, Jerry and I are getting along in years, I don't know how much longer I can go out there in the middle of the rainstorm and channel those culverts so they take the water. Part of the package there has a letter I wrote in July of nineteen for, uh, two thousand fourteen, rather, to Zen Highway Superintendent explaining all that. I don't have the copy of the photos, but I can get you those if you need them. Followed up by a letter in June of two thousand fifteen, basically to the board, saying nothing's been done. That was, what, six, seven years ago? So I'm not here to complain in the sense that I know there's other issues of the roads in town that need probably more attention than ours does, but at this point, the runoff has been so severe on the south side of the road, you're starting to see channeling there, and parts of the road between number eighteen and thirty on the south side are starting to undermine. So basically, between eighteen and thirty, the water runs down the road. It does not even get into the shoulder of the road. So in the winter, that all freezes over. It's an ice skating rink. So I'm coming home, I'm coming down the road, and right in front of Robbins, I have to get over on the left lane to avoid sliding on the ice. If somebody's coming at me, I can't stop. So every year, they put a lot of salt down to mitigate that, but actually, work needs to be done on the shoulder. Okay, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, I can't tell you what needs to be done. I'm not here, as I said, to point fingers or complain about anybody, you know, what they do as far as their job. Just want you to be aware that it's been six, seven years and it's been no work done.
Okay. Um, Dave, do you want a copy? I think, Joy, would you, do you mind sharing with the? Um, Dick, have you met?
No, no.
This is Dave. He's our new highway.
How you doing, sir?
I, I.
I've been there plenty of times, but time will tell your time. Yes, it is a mess.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't help right now, they're cutting trees, and they've dropped trees on that Yakum culvert area. I mean, it's just.
And so it's blocking.
I have to go and move trees to get water to flow.
So one thing that needs to be done is this culvert needs to be cleared near Yakum?
Yeah, the culverts are fine. There's nothing wrong with the culverts.
Okay.
The water is not getting to them because there's no shoulder on the road to carry the water.
We had mentioned it was some overgrowth in certain areas.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You can't see it. You can see where the, the dirt and, and sand from all the driveways that come down and blocked whatever access there was. That's what I keep clearing, opening up in the middle of the rain.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
Oh, there's any catch basins by those culverts?
No.
Oh, I think there's any.
No, I don't think that's an issue.
It just runs, this runs on each shoulder of the road, but yeah, cause culvert one across.
So what do you think, Dave? Is that, is the shoulder on Gore Road something that's on a to-do list somewhere, or do we have?
Actually, the whole road's on a to-do list. I talked to one of the Aspen guys up there, they're doing a tree, tree roof up there. And I asked, when you gonna start taking any of the ash trees? He says, no, but I would like to take a lot more of it. So I said, should I call Barry about this? Barry is in charge of the resource of the, uh, the trees.
Okay.
And I talked to him the other day, he will come up and go talk about it. I go, it makes more sense of you cutting down certain trees and still have to go back and repair your power lines, but trees, other trees fall off.
Sure.
He goes, I can take as much as we can off, but it's up to the homeowners, how much we're allowed to take off. I know some, some homeowners would just love to have it all there, but, you know, so you can have a lot of sun and just, that would be the plan, is to remove as much as you could so we get the sun down there. And that's what's causing most of the problems with the roads around here, is there's no sunshine. And it freezes, oh, freezes, oh, along with no ditch work. On that.
Okay, I see.
I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to get a schedule together, which roads are the worst, and I'm still, my number one, they're all the worst.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take a look at it tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. What else you live answer?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I had Dick Hart put a square on it to catch the water before it got to my leach field.
Yeah.
I had another gentleman put in a French drain to keep the water off the leach field.
Yeah.
You know, I spent two and a half terms on a planning board in town, so I know.
Sure.
There are other, plenty of needs in town, and I don't mind doing things if they help the situation, not involve necessarily a big expense from the town. But it's reached a point now that you're gonna lose that road.
Yeah. Um, I thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I can't stand up, so I guess.
Thanks.
All right.
Um, okay, so, oh, next I have Bob. Did you wanna come up? Bruce?
That's my fault.
Would you? If you wanna have a seat there, Bruce, you can, uh, the microphone will pick you up. Well, for the people.
I know, I know.
Here, we can.
I don't think, I don't think you have a problem here.
Hi. My original intent of coming in here tonight was just to give you an update and say, we're having the fair, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. However, in the last four days, events have caused us to look, us being the board, to look at the situation from a different perspective, and we made the decision to cancel the fair this year.
Okay.
Based on the prevalence of COVID nineteen, the variants, and everything that's happening on a societal level. Every intention of coming back in twenty twenty-two?
I hope so.
Absolutely, no question about that. We'll be back bigger and better, but it, it just reached the point where there are events that are, are creating issues for people with, with the nineteen and the, the variants. It appears it gets through masks. It appears it reinfects people that have already had COVID, and it certainly has the potential to infect people who haven't been vaccinated, as well as those who have. And with the size crowd that we anticipated, we made the decision that this is something that we need to do to protect people without causing undue harm or discomfort. And so it was not an easy decision for us to make. We spent a lot of time up there this summer with construction repairs, et cetera. Some of you may have driven North Street and seen what we have done to the roof on the large barn, bringing back some memorabilia for those of us that are old enough to remember why it's there and what's, what it was originally, why it was originally painted, and why Blanford is on, on that barn. I don't know that a lot of people, yeah, currently living in town, remember why it's there or, or why we stream it. But the letters were fading. It was last painted, the east side was painted in the early nineties, and it faded to the point where it was almost disappearing, and the, and the left side had all but disappeared, or the west, west side had all but disappeared. And so late spring, early summer, we thought that, you know, this would be nice to start to brighten up and spruce up the fairgrounds and remind people of things that in the past and why that was painted up there, so.
Looks good. Thank you.
We, we've replaced a couple of roofs in terms of, of cleaning them up, and we were anticipating a really productive fair this year, but in light of everything that's going on with the COVID nineteen, we just decided that this is, is something we really need to do. Not an easy decision, as I said, and for anybody who's on social media, and I am not on social media, thankfully, I guess, because for anybody that's on social media, apparently there are some individuals who are dissatisfied.
I'm sure, yeah, well, you can't please them all.
Would, would be an understatement with, with, you know, what we've, we've done and whatever, and all we can do is say, in good conscience, we did it, and we'll be back next year. And if, if anybody doesn't believe that we'll be back next year, or that we won't be bigger and better, then there's not a lot we can do other than come back next year bigger and better. That's pretty much it.
Excellent.
And, have anything for me?
No, I don't think so. We talked a little bit about the fair at our, um, LRP meeting, and you had an awesome representative there. So we'll continue. I think we have another meeting Wednesday, did you say, Josh?
Is this the, is this the, is this the potential for relief money from?
We're, we're looking at, yeah, improving downtown businesses in Blanford, and we're recognizing the fair as, you know, a business in Blanford.
Okay.
And, you know, we talked about the importance of it and the success of the fair, you know, sort of the implication that has on the success of Blanford downtown.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, we have some folks coming in this week to talk, to work with us on our walkability. Um, and, you know, so everything's sort of, um, there's like transition between all of our different downtown facilities.
Okay.
So that's one thing we'll look at. But, yeah, there's some possibility of some funding to help.
Okay. Is there, is there any anticipated COVID relief funds?
So we are actually gonna be talking about, um, the ARP rollout plan in a few minutes, and there would be a possibility for the Union Agricultural Society to apply through that for some COVID relief. Um, and you could certainly talk about, you know, two years of not having a fair and how that hurts, you know, the, the society, and looking for some funds to receive through that, maybe to help with Pavilion or whatever it is that you guys are working on out there.
Can you, or can I make a request that I be, that, that the board, I, through Josh, I assume, get, get in touch with me relative to that, so?
Well, it's gonna be on our website, and the application will be right on there. So you guys, as a Union Agricultural Society, can, um, talk amongst yourselves and fill out the form and send it in, and then, then it'll get, it'll come to us, and we'll work together to, you know, take a look at the, the project, project sort of ideas. And that will certainly be one, I think, that'll be.
And also, if you want, I'd want to happen to meet with you and talk more extensively.
That would work.
Um, yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Not that I'm technically challenged, but I would be, I'd much rather work that way if, if we can do it.
Yeah, right now, absolutely.
If you can communicate with me, then we can, you know, because it's easier for me to, to get this information and then disseminate it to the people on the board that need to have it, as well as the general board, but, you know, if it would be easier if it came, you know, to me, that's via Josh, and then the communication between the, the Union Agricultural Society and the, and the swipe board.
Oh, what's the best way to get all the phone or email?
Yeah, either. You can, you know, if you want my, I, let me write this down for you.
And I called you Bob because of.
That's okay.
I probably have his email, but I'm not positive, so.
Thank you. All right, very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for listening.
All right, so next up, we've got action items, review and take action on the contract with FERCOG for procurement assistance.
Um, where is that copy? Here it is, looks like this. This is just to engage with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments through procurement process for securing and contracting with a paving company. It started working on.
Russell Stage.
Russell Stage.
Okay, and this has been reviewed by town council?
This hasn't been reviewed in the previous form, though.
Okay. You should probably do that.
Yeah, okay.
First.
I haven't done, I'm gonna do that, I usually do.
I know, you always do. I expected a yes. All right, so then we'll table it?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Whoa. Yeah, I mean, how about we table?
Can we approve it based on? Okay, so we can motion to approve the contract between FERCOG and the town. Hold on, consistent? Nope, that's not contingent. I'm gonna have a hard time with words and names, contingent upon, uh, feedback.
Very well written.
Good.
And so once I get that, I'm sorry, you got that.
Second.
What, what was the motion?
So I'm approving it contingent upon approval from.
Oh, yeah. Anything to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, and then that way we can come in and sign it.
Yeah.
During the week.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, so I'm gonna give this copy to you, Josh, and then just when it's all set, we'll come in and sign. Do you need two signatures or just one of them?
Uh, it looks like here there's a line for each of you.
Okay.
So at least two, you can have all three signed.
Okay, so next up, we've got the the review and take action on the amendment date for the DGMA solar pilot, and I believe we have a representative on Zoom with us. I see a phone number, but not a name.
Hamel, is that you on the line? Is there anyone that's on the waiting room now?
There is not anyone in the reading room.
Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me right now? Sorry, I didn't unmute myself properly. Yes, I'm on the line, Joe Hamel.
We just, yeah, I wanted to make sure you were on the line. So this DGMAS is one of the four or five solar projects going on in town. And so the folks at DGMAS wanted to do an amendment to the pilot specifically to change two things. One, the, the, the name of the company, but also number two, to remove where it says in the agreement, the original agreement for pilot payments to begin November twenty twenty or after mechanical completion date, whichever comes first, to remove November twenty twenty language and just leave it as after mechanical completion date. And so he's representative from the pilot program is there to explain the reasoning behind why he wants to amend that piece. But just so you're aware, I did speak with council when he wanted, he had requested at the board table so he could have some time
Okay.
to look it through and further discuss before making a decision. Either way, um, we wanted the representative from DGMAS to be present, just kind of use this opportunity to explain his reasoning behind amendment request.
Okay.
Is this, uh, this is North Black River?
This is, which one is this one? This is on a, no, it's not North.
George Mallard Road.
Okay.
Okay, you have the floor. If you wanna tell us about, um, your reason for the amendment?
Yeah, so, um, this project was approved a couple of years ago, and we actually did go in front of the planning board in June, I believe it was, um, because the permit required us to start construction, construction within two years, so we got that amended to get an extension with the planning board, but the anticipated timeline was to have this built in twenty twenty. Basically, the state incentives and other reasons have dragged this on farther than we've expected initially, so, um, the project is now slated to hopefully be constructed next year. And so this kind of hard coding of the starting of the term for the pilot has, you know, unintendedly started our twenty-year term ahead of the twenty-year term of our project. The project has a twenty-year term because the SMART program, the state program, provides that incentive, that, the program for twenty years. So we're hoping that we can align the pilot to just be coincident with the term of our project, and that's kind of why we're asking for that date, the hardcoded date to be removed, so that it can just align appropriately with, when, with whenever the project is built, which is, I think, what was originally intended when we had this agreement hashed out in the first place. And then for the, the name, we had a name change of the entity. Absolutely nothing else has changed. It's still the same entity, like the same EIN number and everything associated with it. It's just more of a nomenclature thing internally as to why we changed it from DG Massachusetts Solar to DG Massachusetts CS. So just giving the agreement to properly reflect that.
Okay. Um, any questions? Yes. Yes, go right ahead. Do, you might wanna stand to the mic so that he can hear you at home.
Right there, you see that, or you can sit down here.
Whichever you're more comfortable.
Uh, you're correct, this permit was issued in July of two thousand nineteen. By the way, who am I speaking to?
Joe Hamel.
That's not Joe Hamel.
No, he's on the phone. That's why you see the telephone.
You see me up there. That's all.
Oh, okay.
Oh, my God.
I've got reading glasses, that's. So the special permit was July of two thousand nineteen. And you applied and we approved for an extension for one year in May. And we've heard a number of reasons why it was requested, and I sort of understand it. But I do have some questions on this. Did you ever get a building permit for this project?
No, we had not sought out building permits. It would take, um, like full engineering to get to that point, which we had not done yet, because we don't have certainty on the state incentive.
Are you at a stage now where you are gonna start this?
Uh, no, the state incentive needs to be released before we would be able to have certainty and move forward. The project relies on the economics to work out, and right now, that's a missing piece. It's still kind of being held up.
And when you're talking about the start of the twenty-year calendar, the way I read the contract is, no matter what, whether you made the mechanical connection or not, you were supposed to start paying in November of twenty twenty. But I guess, to be fair, we shouldn't be charging if you haven't started, but I think that's one of the reasons you really wanna change the contract. And my concern on this is when the heck is this gonna get started, if it ever, and when is it gonna be completed? And I suggested to the board that maybe they can take out the November, the first twenty twenty to start, and put in another date, whether it's July of next year or whenever. But there's gotta be a closure on this project. It's been going on for a long time. And as a side issue, your solar company here on Mallard Road is the same as the one on Otis Stager, same parent company, Nextera. And the last correspondence I saw said that pilot fee on Otis Stager Road is still not been paid yet. Is that correct?
Oh, it's, it's coming. It was, uh, we had the wrong address.
It's coming, but you haven't got it.
We just sent the invoice a few short days ago, not yesterday.
Okay, that makes me feel better because I was getting concerned about that.
Yeah, I know, I connected with Hamel about it, and when he looked at where we sent it, he said, no, that's not our address, so we were able to get that fixed.
Do you know of the property taxes on George Mallard Road for these acreage? I think it's forty-eight acres, it was under sixty-one. Has that been invoiced and collected?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm looking to it.
Do you know, Joe?
Yes, I do. It has been. We had withdrawn, not the full forty-eight, but just the, like, fifteen or so acres that the project is, that's been withdrawn, and the back taxes have been paid for that.
Joy, I just wanna tell him that, um, once they pull a permit for building, that's all gonna be investigated anyway, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So anyone that pulls a permit, they don't get it unless all taxes are up to date.
Okay, and Joe, I would like to caution you that if you come back next year for another year's extension to the planning board, it might be a little more difficult then.
Hey, Joe, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that issues of COVID kicked this project down the road a little bit because of the holdup at the state level, or?
Um, honestly, it's, it's at the DPU level, so the state released a whole, another, like, sixteen hundred megawatts of solar that they were going to provide incentive for to continue to meet their goal of going solar by twenty thirty. Um, the DPU, I'm sorry, the DOE R drafted all the regulations, sent it to the DPU, and it's been stuck there for over a year. I don't think anyone really saw this commenting, coming, and they've gotten just a slew of complaints from numerous developers similar to us that we're expecting this and trying to make investment decisions back a year ago and have had difficulty investing in the state because of this.
So I, I guess, like, the point I'm trying to make, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, that there are just some outside elements here out of your control that causes the project to stall a little bit.
Exactly. If it were up to us, we would have built. Exactly. If it were up to us, we would have built a long time ago.
Well, that's good to hear.
Okay, so my understanding is that this amendment is going to go through our town council. And then we will discuss again next week. Is that correct, Josh? So we'll table this.
I don't think you meet next week, but I don't think there's even a rush. But just to have this done and over with, right, Joe? I mean, we've came along this far.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we can, um, so I guess I would make a motion to table this until our next meeting after it's reviewed by town council. Is there a second? Any discussion? On favor? Aye. Josh, I'm gonna give you this back. Thank you, Joe. I appreciate it. Do you have anything else? Before you head out? Are you good?
Um, no, I might stick around for your discussion on George Mallard Road, but.
Um, all right, next up, we talked a little bit about the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act rollout plan. COVID relief funding. Josh, do you want to?
Yep.
Take that one? I know you've marked that.
So I put a form in your packets that looked like this.
Yep.
And it looks like it's front and back. And this is a draft rollout plan, just to get the conversation going with the select board and, and gauge your. Direction. But as you know, the town of Blanford is scheduled to receive a total amount of three hundred and sixty six dollars. Three hundred and sixty six thousand, three hundred and thirty four dollars of ARPA funds, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one. And so I've been trying to think of creative ways to best not shoot from the hip. And roll this out in a way that's equitable, transparent. And that focus and strategic and focused on the priorities of the community. Specifically because, as you know, three hundred and sixty six thousand really isn't a lot of money. It sounds like a lot of money, although we're very fortunate to have it. It's great. But certainly want to make sure that whatever projects that you decide prioritize to receive funding. That they are in line with what's eligible based on the treasury guidance. And also align those that are eligible that, you know, they're part of the top priorities of the community. And it's going to have the longest and the greatest impact to Blanford in a positive way. So this form that you have ideally would be on an ARPA page we create on our town website. Along with a link of which people can click. Wendy will create this online form, very simple, easy, easy to use, which would just be simply your name. Organization, be it a department or business, nonprofit, or even a resident of the town. And then their project suggestion. And that's what that really is. It's not really an application, but instead. A platform of which people can submit. Their suggested project or idea which they want to see supported through ARPA. And so we would collect all of that in a period of time.
So they'll get emailed to you from the site?
So, yeah, Wendy can set it up that way so that as they hit the submit form, it automatically gets emailed. So we'll collect all that during a period of time. Let's say we give people thirty days or sixty days or two weeks.
Okay.
To apply, we would look at those project suggestions, review whether or not they're eligible. And then once we've kind of narrowed it down to eligibility, at that point, you guys can decide what you think is the best format to review them.
Great.
Be it at a select board meeting, or maybe you want to send it to finance, or maybe you want to have community focus groups. Whatever the method would be, at that time, we can talk about how you want to be transparent and inclusive and whatnot. So that's what we're, what I was thinking as a process, however you decide to change things around. And certainly is up to the direction of the board. But just so you're aware, as far as timeline is concerned, we have four years to spend this. So it's not like we have to really quickly spend all three hundred and sixty six thousand yesterday. And also, and, and the payments, it's, we don't get all the money upfront. It, it comes in pieces. And actual payments can lag up to December of twenty twenty six. So, you know, we have time here.
Um, at the bottom there, I love where you linked it to the master plan, open space and rapid recovery. Can we link those there?
Okay, so like at the actual link to those pages?
Yeah, just so people can.
And so the purpose behind this, because, you know, we don't want plants to just sit on the shelf and collect dust. There's a lot of.
Yeah.
There was a lot of time, Zoom time and effort put into that process and surveys completed. And, you know, I think using those three documents, the master plan, the open space and recreation plan. The local rapid recovery plan gives us. A general idea of what the town's priorities are.
I think that we should almost take that information and move it up because I think it gets, it gets lost at the bottom. Um, I wonder if. We couldn't put it somewhere within like the first. One or two paragraphs, you know, just so that people understand. I mean, so it is kind of a lot. You're asking people to look through these plans, but they are summarized, correct? The plans have like a, they have like a.
There's a section in the plan where. At the end where it reads a.
Like a.
Strategic objective.
Yeah.
One, objective two, or you know what I mean? Like it's summarized at the end with the.
So just because, like you said, there was so much money and time put into the plans, I would love if they, if people made an effort to try to connect. Whatever their requests are somehow with those.
And so the different projects, I mean, that when you get into eligibility, again, that's where it gets very baked for me. And the more I read into, you know, the different fact sheets and the reference guide, which will be linked onto the site as well for people to review. The more questions you have. The two. Things of note that I know is eligible for sure are infrastructure related projects around waters.
Yeah, I was just gonna say Dick could write a project request for his road.
So I know Chester Road, we've talked about. But also remember that we're also having infrastructure monitoring pipeline. And so that's something, again, not rush and shoot from the hip here because if and when that becomes available and we know what Blanford is getting from the federal government. For infrastructure, maybe that we supplement it or any infrastructure related projects under ARPA. We can say, well, you know, we'll free up ARPA use for other project ideas and then move that to the infrastructure relief.
Yeah.
Depending on how much is available.
You could use that whole thing just to go on a road, probably still not.
It's tricky, right? Because you want to support, I'd love to see funding go to, you know, the handful of businesses we have in town.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and the fair could certainly.
You know, and, and the fair, and then you start thinking about other priorities like drainage and, and road and structure. There's a broadband, although I think broadband right now is sufficient.
I think we're good. People are so happy, by the way.
So we might not have to, but I'm sure you're going to get some requests. Project request for ARPA to fund broadband related activities. So it's going to get very tricky, very quickly, fairly quickly, you know, as requests start rolling in, you have to try to figure out. You know, you got three hundred and sixty six thousand dollars and you might have a one point one million dollars worth of requests. And you're like, oh, wait a minute.
We need more money.
So it's, it's going to get tricky, but you know, you get what you plan for as long as you have a process that's, that's transparent and open. And inclusive, it's easier it is to make those decisions.
Well, I like the approach. I think that, I'm excited to see what some of the requests are to come in.
You did, yeah. What about you?
I don't have any questions.
The end of the line. I mean, do you like the four minute though?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have, I really don't have any questions. I'm interested though, you know, like with the master plan. And the open space and all that and rapid recovery plan. I'd like to see more. Information on that. You know, I know it's not, you know, you can't have it to me right now, but you know, at some point, we're at that point where. You know, I'd like, because I think, you know, as we look at it, we'll be able to make decisions on this person upon the state.
Do you need a printed copy of those?
They, they already, we're just trying to find some time to get them picked up or dropped off.
Okay.
They're our hard copies of the plan in full color and it's nice, nicely blinded.
I've been trying to get John to read the open space one. I'm like, no, it's really interesting. You have.
It sounds daunting, but once.
It's very interesting, yeah. Useful information, absolutely. All right, I mean, it is like fifty pages. Okay, so, um. We have no more action items. We've got unfinished business. So here we go. We've got Sperry Road and then George Mallard. Talk to us about Sperry Road, Dave. Do we have the mirror ordered or?
The mirror is in.
Yay, okay. And it's upper?
No, it's in. I just got to talk to the neighbor across the street from there.
Okay.
To, it's okay for me to put it.
On that street, great. That's exciting. Okay.
I'm still waiting on the signs for Old Chester Road.
Okay. Um, now, what are, are we talking more about the end of Sperry Road? I don't even like thinking about it. Where did we leave it at the last point?
I think, um, I wasn't at that meeting, but the.
Yes, we heard from.
Was going to bring some deeds regarding.
She did. So she came, I'm just trying to remember where we left off. It's not very. She came and brought some deeds. She was really adamant. She had, you know, she wrote us a letter. She had a whole presentation. She had had conversations with Rainey before. She was really adamant that it's actually her land that, that the end of the road is on. And that her grandfather would own the land prior to her had extended, did some work on the road in order to put up the cell tower that's there. So when he had approached the town for the same reasons about road maintenance, the town had said no. Um, so she was really adamant that we not.
So I know that the assessors or CAI Technologies, the mapping GIS company and as well as RRG. When they look into the information, they can confirm that, yes, it is a road. But what they're saying is that, you know, unless there's no document that reflects a vote taking place to discontinue the road for any reason. At the moment, it's a tunnel road. So that's.
So the other thing I asked was anything from RRG that we found, like that be sent to this woman? I think, did you cut, did you reach out to RRG? I can't remember where we left it. I know we had put minutes from that week that we sent her anything that we had from our assessor so she could have copies of the information we had. I'm trying to remember her name.
I'm just a little confused because Sperry Road went from Russell State Road. Twenty three. Okay, at one point. Now. After the turnpike went in. Was, was the remnants of the road, was it dated to her grandfather or? Do we still? Have responsibilities for that road? I mean, there's.
That's why I keep, I feel like we're going in circles and we don't have any answers.
No, we don't.
So.
I don't want this to wind up into some kind of lawsuit, but I think at some point, we need to, that either the town. Turn what was left over to her grandfather or some documentation.
So here's, no longer, here's, here's the, the communication here. It says, all the surveys and deeds provided reference the existence of the road. In fact, the Runyon deed specifically references the road going all the way to the north line of the Massachusetts Turnpike. So then he wrote, said, I understand that we have only review limited information, but the pier that's very rich go all the way to the turnpike. I suppose that a portion of the road may have been discontinued or abandoned, but it would require research to determine that.
Research with the clerk, correct?
Yeah, some minutes somewhere of the town accepting the road as abandoned or. Yeah.
Okay, so this is, what, let's do this. Let's make sure that Ms. Runyon has all of the information that we have. And that the assessors have this, which is the packet that Ms. Runyon brought. And then let's ask for Doris and Mary. To please research the town meeting minutes to see if there is a road abandoned or discontinued.
She shares some dates here too, it might make it easier.
Question, Dave, sorry.
Yeah, um. If it was dated to, then would they have a survey that on it sometime along the way, that survey?
Yeah.
I think that's what they looked at, though.
That, that would be what RRG looked at?
I mean, that's the comment here, all, all the surveys and deeds provided reference of the existence of the road.
Right, but if they changed it sometime in nineteen fifty four or somewheres. They would, they should at least have it surveyed so it showed on their deed. On their deed stating that, yes, our property lines have changed and this is what we got extra.
So if it doesn't say it, then that means it didn't happen.
Unless it's somewheres in many minutes somewheres. Yes, right. So there's a lot of research to be done.
Now. Correct me if I'm wrong, now, there are some roads that we chose to close. Like Nydrom. We're no longer going to maintain that. The notice is up in term, it's still there, it's a right of way, but it's not going to be accessible. Although if someone wants to go down there with their dirt bike, we can't stop them, but we're not going to maintain it. And then we got this landlock clause that. Massachusetts straddle was with, where this gentleman has property that wants to timber. And. This property is virtually landlocked if we don't service the road. And I can't see putting a whole bunch of money in the road or someone's going to show a profit and we're getting nothing for it. I mean, there's so many elements here that. To my headache.
Yeah. Okay, so if those are, if those could be our next three steps. And then. I guess if we, if we hear back from town clerk, whether either yes or no, the road is abandoned or not. That can help us make our decision. I don't think any of us are keen on spending any money on the road.
If she could find a date that. They said that she took over that section.
Yeah.
That would help the clerk a whole lot. Point start.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah, we lost it, lost it nineteen fifty, but how many years afterwards did they finally abandon the road and give it to her?
Yeah.
Give you ten years, twelve years or six days. So that would help her a lot.
Yeah. It must have been when her father or grandfather was putting up the cell tower, I would imagine. That's when he was. Okay, does that make sense? Are we, does that sound like we're making any headway? I really hate talking about Sperry Road at this point.
No, I think, I think like if we can find the agreement for the cell tower, that will explain a lot.
Yeah, I think that sounds pretty good, which would be on record.
Absolutely.
With town clerk.
Yeah.
So the town clerk should research and then look around the cell towers.
That period of time.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next up, George Mallard Road. This is another fun one to talk about. So the first step was Mr. Thank you. Was Mr. Stacks repairing his portion of the situation? Do you know if that happened, Dave?
Well, all I know right now is that I and select board do agree that there is a very amount of water coming off this park. Down the road.
Down the road, but since he's put a barrier across the upper driveway. That has slowed down.
And that's recent?
Four weeks ago.
Okay.
What's that?
Something like that.
Yeah.
So are we at our place, we can put the culvert in now?
Uh, but there's still water coming off of his property.
Okay.
Right next to his driveway, which is a, uh, a, um, grass slayer.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I checked, yeah, the, I wrote there, it's off of a kind during range time to verify. But there is also water coming down the right side, as you're going down the hill.
Okay.
Okay, uh, but there's more water coming out of his grassy area. Across the road.
Okay, so he did some work, but not enough?
I, yes, yes.
Now, if the culvert that by his lower driveway.
Yes.
All right, that crosses the road.
Yes.
If we were to take that out and put a straight culvert under his driveway. Hopefully at his expense. Uh, that would deviate a lot of that water that we're seeing.
I, yes, I believe it would.
Oh.
And what Ray's ideal was, before he retired, was to put a. Over across the driveway, running into a catch basin. Come down, you want, I'm not sure, I don't remember how deep, we'll see where to go, and then from the bottom of the catch basin. Run color all the way down to, on the, uh, left side, as you're going down the hill, all the way down to the end. And, uh, dig it all out, dig it out, install it, rock around it.
Yeah, cause I noticed that, I was out there, you probably saw me when, Sunday when I was out there, I was curious about it, and, uh. I noticed that almost three quarters of the way down the hill on the left side going down. That some of the roof wrap had blocked that progress, it was coming out on the road and then going back in.
Yeah.
Now, if we were to cut that banking back.
Uh, I, I, I think the road is wide enough right now.
No, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to do is get the water away from the edge of the road, so if we were to cut that banking back. A little bit with a, with some kind of roof wrap barrier between that and a draw.
I, I like river rapers things, but I've been using about three inch finest a, a lot.
Yeah.
On the right side, it, it seems to me to blow out a whole lot of it.
Yeah.
Uh, plus, the riprap catches a lot of material, like leaves and all that, which causes a lot of problems down here lately.
Yeah.
Um, but I was going to have it just dug right out, you know, now two feet down.
Yeah.
And put a riprap underneath it, cover it and all that, but I also wanted to put a couple of, um, tees in it.
Yeah.
So that if there was a problem, we'd be able to open it teed up and flush it out at certain areas on the way down. So.
Did you ever get any, uh, I know you had an engineer look at it, did he ever get back to you on that?
Yeah, he got back that, he got, he got back to me on it, um. It wasn't really what I expected, I was expecting more, but you know, it's what you get free. He gave me a, a picture, a satellite picture of, um, the water drainage and all that stuff and. From right, just past the driveway, second driveway.
Yeah.
And like a triangle out, there's a lot of water, there's a drainage in that area, you know?
Yeah.
But if you have to go up there when it's raining really bad and, and rain for at least two or three days. You'll see where it's coming out.
Oh, I, I have the feeling that we dodged the big bullet this weekend.
Oh, yes, we did.
Did you, have you had a conversation with Steps, um, about the barrier that he put up? To let him know that it's helping, but not enough, okay?
I, I went by direct twice and I haven't seen my own yet.
Okay, so, um, since our next step would be to put the culvert in, correct? Um, can you reach out to Steps this week, have a conversation with them?
Yeah.
Um, let him know what's working, what's not working, and then, you know, that we'll be putting the culvert in once, once this is complete. That would be awesome.
Even if he's not willing to pay for it, we would say just put in the culvert in, because we won't be constantly repairing the road.
Well, I think we already have the culvert, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there any way that we can, if we were to do it? Put the cost on homeowner, uh.
So, what we can do is that we can install it, and once it's installed, it's his responsibility to maintain it.
And I'm, I'm saying this like to recoup that cost, you have to pay the town or, you know, or a lien of some kind.
As of right now, since, since I last I fixed it, I put almost three thousand dollars of material on the one side.
What I'm saying is if we go on this property to fix the problem, when we put a lien on the property to recoup the funds to.
Well, you won't get the lien, you won't get nothing if they sell the property. A lien.
What, what, what is, what do you think that, uh, culvert, twenty foot culvert?
Oh, this is twenty foot.
Yeah, and what would that cost the town?
Well, the average is about fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars.
I mean, for leaning.
Yeah, so.
Still having to give permission to do it.
Yeah, well, and if you could get permission to do it, and we're saving on road time. And materials, then I think it's easier, if he's not willing to pay for it or pay half of it. You know, we're still saving money.
Right, the long run, yes.
In the long run, we're still saving money, so I think it's going, I think it's good to approach that, and I'm glad it's on your shoulders.
There's always these unique, I mean, we had a, a circumstance like this on, uh, when I first started here.
Yes. Oh, God, yes.
Going in a circle, going in a circle, and finally we're just like, well, we really gotta get these done.
It was not beach, Zaca Beach or Burchill.
Or, yeah.
That was fun, that was the driveway.
Yeah, also.
Okay, so you've got your marching orders for that, we'll touch base with us, let us know how it goes. I'm writing notes to myself, so I can remember next time.
I write notes and forget.
I know, there's too much going on right now, um, do we have any more unfinished business?
Um, I guess, really, you're, the hearing that you were here for, but that T J and, and Tom participated in.
Okay.
We rescheduled that hearing.
Yeah.
Or. The day after Labor Day, Tuesday. Okay, so just keep that on your radar.
Yeah, that's the one with the poll, the poll here, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Cause that, that's gonna be interesting too, cause that involves four road walls.
Also another question too, with that, when they took that soil filled in, and the poles are going down the yard, they're gonna be. It depends on who gets theirs first.
Yeah.
Because I put my pipe first, this one has three range poles.
Yeah.
That's their problem.
When they put the poles on board road, maybe they could do some drainage for us.
I, I rather have Kennedy.
Yeah. Take down some trees, um, all right, new business, um, we have the all old department expense report, but. We went through it, looks good, twenty percent everywhere, so I, do you wanna take time on that, are you good?
I'm good.
All right, it's really to here, um, Dave, do you have more for our highway update?
Yes, I do, I have a chapter ninety bits that needs to be signed.
Okay.
And I have, then I'm gonna have Joanne email it to me and I submit it to, uh, picture one, tell it approved.
Okay.
Once that's approved, um, I just, I just send the rest of paperwork. My P P O, that, that, and you.
Okay.
Sit all together on, on one.
What's the, this project for?
Say again?
Uh, this chapter ninety request.
Russell State.
For the Russell State.
Yes. It, it's used the funds out of chapter ninety to, uh, hit the ground here.
Total estimate ninety thousand, we need a motion, uh, yeah, so I'll make a motion to, um. Approve the application, do I approve the application, I don't know.
Wait here, this is, and that's a question to you guys, cause every time we've done chapter ninety request. We, you know, Ray would have gotten it together, we called you guys and it's time, but we'd rather have it come from like on the.
I don't see why not, I mean. Yeah.
So we can start that practice, but this is the first time we do an actual motion.
So I would make a motion, um, I guess for Slidmore to approve the chapter ninety request.
Second, is, is this how you watch from now on, chapter ninety?
Sure.
During the meeting and all that stuff.
Yeah, that works for us.
Yeah, so you put that in your timeline, so they know you got it, you know what I mean, okay, just like board meets on Mondays or Friday at the.
Um, I can here, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, these are both for you. Um. Excellent, do you have anything else for us, Dave?
Uh, I have. Tree guy coming in, we'll get this, that's the, this is where we're from here. That, no gentleman coming in, uh, the, two weeks also, small stuff, you can go.
Okay.
He's gonna be down on New Land, he's down from there. Up on the corner a little bit, down, down over onto, um, San Francisco. Pretty as far as I can, back in another two, three feet, get rid of the small stuff. That area for the walk to Blair. From, or the left side, the flats are, left hand side, um, a lot of new growth. Trees and a lot of small hangers over there and, uh.
Okay, and how are we holding up with all this rain? Roads are looking okay? Okay.
We, we, we are very lucky.
Yeah.
We're here for five, four, five hours.
Yeah.
Uh, no big issues, I've seen, the only issue I see is a lot, needs a lot of work and drainage.
Yeah.
Like, you know, said, you go down the wall, it's, it's running, it's running in the hole.
Yeah.
And this is years ago, over use, and, and that don't make it time. Ready, plan was to, uh, put that as far as you can, and move slope. Of, at its farther back.
Okay.
You would have more opportunity to get very drainage into it.
On board?
Uh, on board, yes, that would be like a, a hole. Shot at one, one time, maybe, you know, all the trees, can't be, well, be already done. Edges will be all we've done, train, uh, just all we've done, and then have it, uh, like two, three inch away on.
Is that something that we wanna look at for a chapter ninety funding from next year type of situation? Or I know we've got Northland for two as a major.
Infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How much would something like that be?
Off the top. I. Right now, I'm interested right now is finishing Sperry.
Yeah.
Next year, I hope, because it needs like two inch overlay on, and that road's all done, but it still needs drainage.
Yeah.
And then we talked about doing, uh, beach hill, going up the hill, for. Uh, almost starts leveling off a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'd like to start that next year if I can, but it all depends on how we go over, going to bridge over. Awesome.
Okay.
We talked about.
Burchill, yeah.
I know, those two I confused on.
Yeah, me too. Beach hill, I got a, a estimate that from Bill.
Yes, I saw that.
Um, hundred ten thousand, that's, it's all his stuff and pulling the permits.
Yeah.
Um, up to three hundred eighty thousand dollars to repair it.
Yeah.
But. It's up to the contractor, how you wanna look about comparing it, because. If you ever can buy it, there's nothing down, there's some water, and it's a stream of water shit.
Okay.
Uh, you would have to figure out a way to how, how to get there and do all the work, they have to look at it.
Yeah.
And keep all soft from falling into it.
Yeah.
Uh, it could be more, it could be less, um, I know that it will be heavily closed for at least probably one day. Cause they're gonna mill, build a bridge, roughly, I think it was like two or three inches, and. Later, before that, that'd be all done, but the rest of the stuff is all the contractors.
If you had to pick one project to apply for A R P, ARPO, whatever I might call it. Or the other, um, for, for funding, for drainage.
Drainage?
Which, yeah, which one would you?
I guess it depends on how much money I've got. Because I, I did protest like for Chester Road, and this, that's like twelve to fifteen hundred feet, and I'm paying a more than eight thousand dollars.
We could fit that in for a trade something.
It's easy to say that now.
I know.
Then you get all the requests, and you're like, oh my God, the brand.
Yeah, uh.
But that would be a ti, and that's something you have an s, an idea, an estimate you.
Yes.
Okay.
Cause I got, I, I got somebody else coming up. We need to get some break from, um, projects, okay, look at.
Okay.
But there, there's a lot of, lot of picture, colors have to get replaced, because Chester Road's got five catch bases out there that. They were never repaired.
Okay, so that would be your number one?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's some, there's some culverts there that, and catch faces that haven't been seen in thirty-four years.
The thing is, uh, there's, there's brand new culvert going through there, several one, but catch bases were never replaced.
Yeah.
And now I kind of like, okay.
Yeah.
I still haven't heard anything back from the job, from FEMA.
Okay.
I sent in the, I sent a message.
Okay.
But I think you might be a little busy now.
Yeah.
So, so either way, um, let's move forward with what we need to do to position us to start repairing that, just.
Yeah.
From what I'm understanding, whether if we spend the money, our money, not chapter ninety, for our money. We can get reversed for it, approved, but if, it's, there is no FEMA letter, let's say.
Yeah.
We can still kind of go forward.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would just say, either way, let's not wait until we hear something, let's get the building blocks going, so that.
For Chester Road you're talking.
No, for, well, for a combination of roads that were impacted by the rain.
You're talking beach hill and then the other, that, okay, yes, I, I agree with that.
I, I do have a question, uh, on Burchill, it's that, um. We start going up the second house on the left, uh, there is a runoff, and there is also a. Culvert quite far across, uh, the right side, one for the left side, um, gentleman there, I guess, at. Highlands, top, on top of everything there, the water does not run out of the ditch anymore, it just keeps on going down the hill.
Uh, we're talking Burchill?
Uh, Burchill, yes, yeah.
This is not the same place we had issues with years ago, we were just talking about that?
Close.
Okay, so it, someone's blocking the?
Yeah, he, he keeps on the stuff off, on top of where, where else.
Okay, um, do we need to send him a letter and let him know that he can't, has, has anyone spoken with him?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Uh, it, it, it would be appreciated if you were able to send a letter to him.
Yeah.
And that, and explain to him that we need to get it there, we need to clean it out, so we have runoff, so we wouldn't have the road issue anymore.
So I think there's a, um, there's a bylaw about culvert, driveway culverts and residents maintaining them. That we can cite.
Yeah, it's usually, yeah, let's, let's.
Yeah, I, but I, I know there's one for, if your driveway has a culvert that you're supposed to maintain.
Yes, so if you can connect with Josh, just give him the address and whatnot, then, um, there's probably a letter in, already in the system somewhere.
Yeah, that's, we can.
Um, yeah, we'll send an official letter and let them know.
Awesome, one other thing, yeah.
You're welcome.
We have to consider as we move forward, is that a lot of the, uh. Runoff trenches on the side to the road, they're, they're really too close to the bank, uh, especially on paved roads. You know, and, uh, we, we're, we're gonna, we, we need to get a buffer between the edge of the road and the runoff. From the, the drainage, and, uh. It, that's, that's gonna take some, uh. Serious looking at, because if, if, if we keep letting the water run beside the road, it's just a matter of time before we're. Looking at more work than you need.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Last but not least, Jennifer.
Talk to us more to help. So, um, we've been awarded ninety-one thousand, uh, two eighty-six.
Woo-hoo.
Mask.
Okay.
Um, for a public health, uh, shared service program with three other towns. But now, this ma, this morning, I got an email that we are getting more money.
What?
And, yeah, and it's going to include seven to eight more tabs. That we're all going to share, so it's not like we get that money all for ourselves.
Okay, so it's a public health clinic?
It's a pub, yeah, it's a, we're, we're to try and get a nurse.
Okay. Okay.
That we're going to share, um, we haven't set down the logistics of. Who wants what type of service.
Okay.
We'll be doing that after Wednesday, after this Wednesday. Um, and we'll decide at that point what that, you know, what the needs are for Lampers.
Mm hmm.
Um, and, you know. I'm looking so that we have a nurse here, like say, every Thursday, or every Friday, or whatever, from this time to this time.
That's great.
Um, so, or at least every other. You know, we have to work out with the, you know.
Yeah.
What the costs would be, or, you know. Town's needs are, so we do, we have a lot to work out, but at least we have that, it's a good start, it's something we haven't had in a very long time.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're excited.
That's great.
Yeah.
So it's been months or what it means. COA, COA probably, she would, or he or she would be in the council on aging. Correct? Usually, I think that's where we've had a nurse come in before.
That's part of it, yeah, this is also for, um. Disease controls.
Mm hmm.
Um. And things like that, so. I haven't had a chance to talk with Mark it to see what. You know, besides their, um, food clinic, which will take over, and that will be done by. You know, the, the shared nurse and things like that. Um, I don't know what else that she does. I think they do a book clinic.
Mm hmm.
And things like that, so.
Cool.
I have to have that conversation with her first.
Okay, great.
That was it.
That's it, that's all you got?
That's all I want.
That's, I don't blame you, it's been a busy couple of years.
Hey, Jen, we didn't get any, um, rises in COVID issues in town, did we? So I know some people, when the fair was canceled. They were like, oh, it was canceled, because cases in town are increasing versus.
You had some cases in town, yes. I'm not going to get into that, but issue.
You don't know how many cases we have in town that have increased?
I do, I'll be happy to send that off to you guys if you'd like.
And there's a pounds around us also.
There is, yeah, there are.
Do you know how, how many up the top of your head? Can you share it with us? Why not?
Um, but I didn't know that, I don't want to talk over today.
I don't understand. It's a secret.
It's not safe, but read your newspaper.
Okay.
Because you know what, if I tell you, Josh, I'm going to have sixty emails, and people disputing that, because the way the public puts it in a newspaper. To what really comes out of what's in our town are two different things.
Yeah.
It's just the way it is.
But.
Mary's not here.
I, I.
And then, and I, and I, and I sit there and I feel like I have to defend the board of health, and I have to defend my reasoning and the map act, and it's way too much.
Yeah.
You know, it really is.